Well, Council meeting, June the 12th, 2025. We don't have anybody coming in electronically, so we'll do a roll call. Justice?
Here.
Larry Hanson.
Here.
Bill Goldsmith is here. Alana Courtney.
Here.
Larry Tuning.
Here.
Marjorie Austin.
Here.
All right, having a quorum, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
You have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item, we have a special presentation by Friends of Urbana. Every year, there is a contest at the middle school that is for the John Mitchell map of essays for the students to write an essay on the Mitchell map, which if you know Urbana history, you know is part and parcel to our history and that we have probably one of the older copies or existing Mitchell maps in existence at the Scottish Factory Store. I believe that ours is older than the one at the Smithsonian, correct?
It is.
And that's really saying something. Very valuable piece and was a critical part of the colonies in the 18th and 19th century up until the 1970s. As our student will say.
Maybe you can tell y'all about.
Yeah. I didn't mean to steal your principal's. So, and now, no further ado.
Well, I just wanted to say a lot of what you were saying, Bill. We've done this essay contest hand in hand with St. Clair Walker Middle School. And particularly, the history teacher there, her name is Marsha Jenlund, because she is just wonderful and loves doing this with the students. So she works with us to put together what their topic is going to be each year. And then she puts some rules in place for everybody. They all came here, all of the sixth graders came over to the museum in bus trips about, I think there were four of them individually. All the students sit in the room, in the math room, and they listen to Dr. Busto tell the story about the map and a lot about John Mitchell. And then the students go back and they're given instructions by their teacher on how to write these essays, you know, format and all that sort of thing. They do additional research. And this year, Dr. Busto was invited to come back over to school to help in their study sessions, answer their questions, and so it was even more this year. There were 15 essays submitted to us. Usually there are 10. And they were so good this year that Marsha asked if we could please consider taking another five, and so we did. So we got the, we Friends of Urbana got the 15 essays, and three of us sat and evaluated them based on four categories. One, for the facts, the accuracy of the facts that they presented. Conceptualization, meaning the ability to take those facts and connect them together to form a full and complete idea to tell the story. And then the essay structure, which she would give to them, which means an opening, a story, and a conclusion. And then the grammar, using correct words and sentence structure to deliver the essay story. We had a presentation on March, or May 16th at the school for all the students, and the the top 15 got a certificate, all of them got certificates. The top 11, or the 11, got a candy bar and a certificate. The top four got a certificate, a monetary prize, as well as a candy bar. I learned last year, if you don't get candy bars to everybody, they go a little hot. So today, we have Kayden Spurlock with us. He is the first place winner. Come on. And it's included in your board package, so you'll have a chance to read it. Kayden receives $100.
And a certificate.
I know. So, thank you so much for recognizing Kayden. He did a great job. It was wonderful.
Really good.
And even the teachers said, we just had such a hard time. The essays were so good, it was hard to split them down to 15, so you can imagine how good this one is. And he did a great job.
Yeah, we did a good rap later. Whatever you want to do.
Kayden's just following directions right now.
Maybe going, turn around this way. Are you, are you? Yeah, I'm sending Billy's, Billy's laugh.
There's mom and sister, too. Bill, how about the flag?
Uh, we could do that, go around.
Can you get over?
Larry, come on. I do have to say, for the record, that Kayden's essay had more information than any of the ones that I've written.
Oh, you're saying that wrong.
Yeah. Okay, everybody stop moving. Thank you so much.
Well, that's one of the funnest things we did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kayden.
Good job, Kayden.
Awesome. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Next agenda item, we have minutes from May 8th and May 22nd. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Reports. Mr. Cosson.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Mr. Mayor, welcome to the council, ladies and gentlemen. My report for May, which is given in June, is that I attended the Finance Committee, in which a draft response to the Audit Management Letter was reviewed and edited. The final version is attached in your packet, and that'll go out tomorrow if you have any concerns. As the Marina Big Grant, as well as the Inter-Virginia Street, which is a separate item on your agenda this evening, we wait to, at this time, when I wrote this, we were still waiting to hear from both VDH and PDC. Both were contacted to follow up. Since writing this, I have heard from the Virginia Department of Health, they have laid out what we need to do to close out that grant. It's an extremely tight deadline, and we're working to try to get an extension on that deadline. We've had a lot of difficulty tracking down the contact person on this grant because the grant moved from one division inside VDH to another, and the person who had the grant and that started retired. So it kind of fell into a VDH black hole until it resurfaced. As far as the PDC and the Inter-Virginia Street termite, Mr. Taylor Ovitz is joining us this evening via Zoom, so he can hear the presentation by Mr. Ovitz. I developed a bid selection package for document for the museum entrance and sent it to three contractors, two of whom were recommended to me by the Virginia Department of Transportation. The deadline for that is tomorrow. I've received one indication that something will be coming up. I've received one indication that they will not bid, and I haven't broken the contract. Along with that, I reviewed the Middle Potential Planning District Transportation Plan. Budget finalization, zoning to include the ongoing special use permit in the Drone Show or the July 5th event have all been worked as well. I continue to engage in the all-natural hazards mitigation plan development efforts. In relation to this topic, we have started to deal with hurricane season. Participated in Dominion Powers Pre-Hurricane Season Brief, and the Marina manager has had most, all of the boats moved this year. There's one that's kind of hung up, but we understand what's happening there, and they'll be able to move it before what I call the serious hurricane season for coastal Virginia arrives. I consulted with EDI as well as HRSC regarding manhole issue. I'll just skip ahead and just say, if they're looking to do complete change out on all the manholes, but until it gets to that point in time, they have cold patched everything. So it shouldn't be any more difficult. They should all be cold patched over, but they will be opening those back up and doing more complicated construction, probably the latter part of the summer. No weight concern for Urbana Creek has progressed to the point I was able to get up with Councilmember Wilson's assistance, I thank him again, to document the locations and all that information that's gone to VMRC. I'm waiting for the spots and then work the next step. Now, although well six project final inspection of water and site stabilization was held on May 8th, and a successful result achieved, under regular use, some testing revealed issues with pump pressure. The corrective action has been taken to include shutting off well six, full utilization of well five, and resealing the drop pipe that had to be completely pulled out and resealed. This is delayed fencing the area for security. Staff continues pulling together the documentation to close the loan with USDA, which may occur before the end of the month. Now, that's what I have in my report. I do need to take up one other item. The county has picked up its sign, change out, and I've got now 25 signs in my office that have been delivered to us. The plan is to put those, to itemize those and put those out for bid, and people can come in and give a sealed bid, like any other auction, high bid wins, they would get first choice on the sign, so on and so forth. Okay? We're missing signs. If anybody knows for any signs might be, we would be happy to take those signs in. If they are town property, no questions asked, and they would be put up into the auction process as well. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me.
No finder's fee if you happen to find a sign.
Would you please clarify that these are the historic signs that we're optioning as just kind of fund fundraisers, right?
Those are general fundraisers.
Yeah. They're, I mean, they are old. They're not, they're not antique, but, but they are.
Do you have a better definition now? Alana?
Somebody said to me the other night, something was an antique, I said, when was it made?
I like calling it antique.
Fifty years is an antique now.
Any questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, six. What's being done to correct everything up here?
They are pulling the entire pipe. So you've got the pump in the bottom, the pipe that feeds the water up, that whole pipe is having to be repulled and resealed.
And when that's done, we hopefully.
We'll have to go through the whole testing, exudological testing, everything else has to be redone. But we're running off of well five now, which is holding up time. Well, three has been terminated. So the building's still down there, but the power to well three's been cut.
Ted, can I ask a water-related question since we're on that? There was an incident in the last week, apparently where a flushing was done in hydrants. And so we lost, citizens lost water. We have no idea why we lost water or for how long. In the future, how difficult would it be to put out a notice that this is going to happen so that people complain?
I can, I can tell you that they were flushing, the day being, fire department.
Yes.
They were opening the hydrants, flushing the hydrant, and at that time, I and several others get what we call alert notices.
Okay.
Okay. My phone started blowing up.
Okay.
Because it was draining the tank down to a certain point. And so, but I knew what the issue was. Until that night, I was.
You didn't know.
I didn't know. Yeah, so I'll speak to the fire department and see if they can give us there to me.
Well, because a lot of people asked me what's going on, and I had.
I know a lot of times they use the one over here, no, over here, to flush out, but they were going down Virginia Street.
Yeah.
And up some of the side streets.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Michelle is not here. Her report is in the packet. Family asks questions, and she's not here, but it looked like it usually does. Something that dovetails with that, as of close of business today, the Tabor Fund is up to $1,089, so it continues to trickle forward, which is good news. Christine, Ms. Branch will now give the clerk's report.
In your packet, you have one that says revised. So, under completed project, I'm still waiting for the final municipal product, actual books. Originally, the contract was something like 11 books, and I told them we did not need 11 books, too, I thought was more than sufficient, so hopefully that'll bring the price down. I developed draft files for the planning commission to review, researched the town code regarding zoning issues, attended the planning commission meetings, prepared minutes, did public notices, meeting the genetic minutes, and resolutions and ordinances as needed. So underneath, I have two needs that are pretty much directly, well, one's directly related to records management, and that is I need to be made an administrator honor who will work at town so that I can access the records I need to get. And so what I would like to ask you for is a motive to authorize and instruct Michelle to make me a full administrator.
We can, we can take care of that administrative. Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah. And the second one is probably the same issue. I need to be able to process credit and debit cards for citizens when they come in now, if the missionals aren't here. I have to take the Marizelle, if Marizelle's not here, there is no one here who can do that. So I need, I need access to that.
Yeah, and that's, that's sort of administrative stuff, so we'll just make sure that that happens.
Ongoing projects, same as usual, town code, finding all the town files. I've started scanning a lot of things into our records. I was able to find four of the missing nine sets of minutes from 2020, 2021. Hopefully, I can find the other five. That's part of why I need access to Google. And I finished today, under future products, I finished the draft files for the VDA today, so whenever they need again, they would, they can review and approve those. Then you can see all the different free seminars that I have gone to. And I went to the, last week to the VML Mall Towns Conference, which was really interesting, and I sent you all a synopsis of different things that happened from, and also links to all the presentations that they had online. So if anybody has any questions.
Okay, Robbie Wilson isn't here, but you want me to pick up finance, and you can fill in the gaps, or you want to? I just want from, from, from the.
I had it covered in the presentation.
Yeah, a lot of the stuff is covered, the management letter for the audit. One thing that we discussed was the pool snack shack, which now the swim team has picked up. There was, there were some trees that needed to be removed at the museum that I think we've gotten bid done at that point, and they fit within the budget that would be administrative. They were leaning over so that they could cause some property damage to neighbors if they weren't taken care of. We discussed our agreement with the marshals on their parking lot and cleared up that arrangement and gave them back for some of the taxes that they had paid that we were recording for the 2019 agreement. We were supposed to be reimbursing them and were caught up to date with that. Budget revisions, we went back through because of the Main Street request and designated, in the budget is, I'm just telling you, it's really tight, and there was a spot where we could find some slack, and so we are designating $1,000. It's not as much as Main Street wants, but it is something that would be designated for Main Street. Playground equipment is coming up later, and I think that pretty much covers it, doesn't it? Any questions on any of those? All right.
Still have a question. Is a thousand coming out of the Tabor?
No.
No. Because there wasn't enough.
Well, there's plenty of money in the Tabor, but it doesn't really fit in the, yeah, if you look at what the Tabor is for, I think it's difficult to justify the general health and welfare of the populace based on the parameters that Dr. Tabor put in his will to have the funds for Main Street to come out of there.
And we couldn't find four of my town.
You're welcome to look. We even wanted to.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah.
What, the, I, I think the question, the decision that the mission of Main Street didn't match the parameters of the Tabor Fund, I'm not sure how that was decided.
Well, who does it benefit, really?
Who does it benefit?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It needs to benefit the entire.
Okay.
Entire. And, in my thoughts.
Okay.
I didn't see it that way. I see it benefiting the business community, you know, the aspects that come along with it, but not the entire community, like fire department, rescue department, like the library, like police.
Okay. Okay.
And I was one that didn't want to take it, to be.
Okay. Okay. But, yeah, it's a different.
We need to find that money, though, and I told this, I said this at the meeting. Mule tax is really helping this thing.
It is.
And that's where that money ought to come from to do something like this. So.
There's a direct correlation.
Direct correlation.
There's, there was something that has a more direct correlation. I think we could argue a general benefit to town, but, but I'm not going to go there. I understand. But yes, but we, we do appreciate, Main Street appreciates being a line item. One of the things that is really, really important was to be a line item in the budget for the town of Urbana, because as we apply for funds to, for things like mural project or for things like other fundraisers that we have to benefit the town, grant, granting agencies want to see that the town has skin in the game. And one of the ways that they do that is by trying to see if you're a line item in the budget. So thank you that we, we're a line item in the budget. We do very much appreciate that.
So I have a question. If you think that the, some of the money should come from the food tax, why wasn't any taken out and provided?
In the budgeting process, we, we know, there's so much stuff that's fixed cost that what, where we apportion extra funds from different things is spread through those other things that we know that we're going to have to spend that are more discretionary. And there's just, there's just not money there. If you go through that, that budget, you can see that we're really pushing to, to get, you know, the things covered that we know we're going to have to cover.
Okay.
But my feeling in this matter is that in the budget, so much is outside of the mule tax, and we know we got to use that for the general fund.
Yes.
But if it goes over, it goes over $4,000. I think we are directed to this.
Right.
I'm concerned.
I agree.
And, and that's the kind of thing, what we, what we do is look at, you've been part of it for the last two years, we, we look at the trends in terms of the, of the, yeah, so I'm going to put this on you.
All right, Larry.
So, any further questions on this, ask Larry.
I mean, like I said, when I, when I made the motion to, to get money to Main Street, I've never been a proponent of Main Street. I, I just, anyway, but, you know, they're, they are trying to do things to better the town and bring people here, just like we do a Second Saturday and, you know, different things, so that's why I felt it was important.
I, I agree, but some of the things that we're fighting, the good news is that year over year, mule tax has a tendency to creep up, but it hasn't gone up at the same rate that expenses have gone up. That's A. And then another thing that we're still dealing with, if you go back to 2021, I think, that the real estate tax was close to $280,000, and we went through the last adjustment, there were things that we didn't take into consideration when we decreased the tax rate down to 21 cents, and that put us in a spot where the current real estate tax for the town is about $255,000, I think, 256 is where we are. And, and so during this time of inflation, we've actually had from real estate tax about a $25,000 decrease in income, which makes, which makes things tougher.
It does. And I think that one of the things that Main Street is committed to and is to being able to show their contribution to the town and to economic development and general enjoyment of life in Urbana, and hopefully next year is going to help, help really make that clear. And so I hope that theoretically that could result in increasing the tax and, you know, other things of that sort. So I think we're very committed to demonstrating that, and we've got to start, so thank you for the start.
I do think that economic development raises everything, you know, I do.
Yep.
I will argue that, much as I love you all.
I agree with you, Alana.
All right. Water, the only thing that goes with water is the issues that we've had with well six coming online, events, Marjorie, or Beth, who's taking it?
We have our next Second Saturday coming up this Saturday. We're hoping it doesn't rain. We're going to make that decision in the morning.
Are we doing that Saturday morning?
I thought we were going to call it Saturday morning.
Okay, Saturday, yeah, okay.
Um, because now the weather.
He said in the morning, and tomorrow's not Saturday.
I mean, in the morning, it's not Saturday.
Wait, is this the reporters, does the events committee mean?
Yeah.
Anyway, we have Ray Pittman and his rock, who's been here last year. We have new members and, tell them what food trucks we got.
We're going to just have small town burger.
And so we hope the weather will work with us, and we'll have that, and we'll get the shooting one done. And if that, if it does rain, we're, we like to move him to October so that we don't miss them.
Yep, because we love Ray Pittman.
Yeah, we do love Ray Pittman.
Um, there's also the Drone Show.
Okay, the Drone Show, I'm really excited about it. That's the 5th of July, and we're going to have Patriotic Band starting at 6, correct? It's 8? 6:30?
We go with that, Michelle.
Okay, sorry, I've been out myself. And then we're going to have the Boat Parade. Do you know, Marjorie?
No, I don't know what time now.
I think the Boat Parade will be about 6:30. And then the drones go up around 9:00. When it gets good and dark, but we're going around 9:00, it might be a different place, but we'll be able to see it, and it'll be really, we're going to be the first people out here having that, and the same people who do the intro, so that we'll have 200 drones.
Three.
Three? I thought it was two. Okay, Billy backed us, there must be true. They're, they're going to go, there's going to be a lot of drones, and it's going to be about 15 to 17 of them, and I think you're going to be surprised, and it's coming off of Rose Gill.
Yep.
I mean, we're excited that they're allowing us to use that, but they call it a launch, but it's really not, just somebody has to lay the drones out, and then they send them up. And so we've gone a lot, if we've done a lot of work on getting the show, and I think y'all are going to like it. And last year, we didn't have anything like that. We've never had anything like that.
No, never.
We just had the fireworks, so we're hoping that this is going to make up for that. Let y'all see.
And then Strawberry Street and Wild Bill will be down at the waterfront for our food truck there.
Yeah, because we'll have the band at the Marina stage, not the Tabor Park.
Yeah, nothing's at the park for those.
So it's going to be different, I think, because of the sun.
All right. And obviously, the advantage of sending off from Rose Gill is that we'll get the reflection on the water.
Right.
Will augment it. Personnel did. Will augment it. Personnel did not meet. Do you have something for you next month?
Do we need to do a motion for the Main Street?
Uh, you need to wait, we just need to turn that item. Yeah.
Okay, Dale.
Where we are.
After that, I'm going to put a little...
Let him be, there you go. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Next is public comment. Just as a reminder, the public comment period for the Holinsky properties and for the budget approval, those public hearings are closed, so if you have things that are specific to those, they can't be entertained. But any other insights that you might want to present would be wonderful and appreciated. So that being said, Megan Hall or Amy?
The three of them.
Megan Hall has Amy Denny as the address.
I saw.
So who's speaking?
We're always...
Oh, and Sarah did another two.
Yeah. We're more support.
All right, good evening. On behalf of Urbana Main Street, I'd like to voice our support for the proposal by the Northern Neck Native Plant Society to establish native plantings at the Virginia Street waterfront property. We've been in communication with the society and are fully on board, not just in concept, but in commitment. Urbana Main Street is prepared to help and maintain this site. And we're working with an additional organization that has also expressed interest in supporting the project, helping us maintain it. While those details are still being finalized, we're confident that between the volunteers from both groups, we can sustain the effort and ensure that beauty, biodiversity, and a welcoming feel to a key piece of town property. We see this as a low-cost, high-impact improvement for Urbana and we are excited to partner.
Very great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something else that you were next on the list?
Next, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, this.
And thank you for the contribution that you made to Main Street. This is a stinker of an issue.
Literally.
Literally. I frequent our playground regularly with my grandson. And I don't know who made the decision to move the porta potties right next to the gate and the old bench that's in the playground area and the picnic tables, but then I'm winged and we couldn't get, when it's hot, sit in the face with... Yeah, so I guess my question is, are they permanent? If they're not, can they be removed? If, if they're here to stay, can we move them further away from the pool?
They're in the shade, pretty creepy.
Well, one definitely is going, so the other one would have to be moved.
We used to have them over there on the wood.
Yeah, at the corner.
That's where it was. And it would lay away.
Yeah, because you don't want to bother people.
But it's, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Megan.
I decline at this time.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Mr. Mayo. Haven't heard from you in a couple of months.
That's what we said.
I mean, it's William Mayo, 320 Rock Mountain Avenue. I rode down to, uh, Virginia Street today, walked around and looked and this guy last month stood up to the Grand Canyon down there where the sand had washed, I see it. And he also stated that the town should give him the land. I disagree. It's the town folks' land. And to prevent the corrosion, erosion, you can put a mat down like you got at the boat ramp and that would stop all the corrosion boarding on the top. It'd be fine. Put a nice dock down, a floating dock, wave in that kayak show because it's a nice piece of property. There's no one in the world, why we can't do something. And we've been doing this for twenty-five years, ever since the, Thomas Lee, my mother-in-law's passed, we've been talking about this, nothing's been done. Won't spend all this money for flowers and stuff. We don't need flowers down there. We got plenty of flowers at home.
That's, that's what they're going to talk about here in a little bit, Billy. On gentleman's plan.
I don't go anywhere.
And that's, that's what, that's also what Main Street just got up and talked about is helping to, as volunteers, to help keep it all going.
Yeah, we can talk about the purpose. It moved out a minute left.
I've got a minute. As Thomas Lee and Dan come around years ago, we couldn't leave our trucks and our boat trailers that are at Marina. They're down home.
Right.
So we did that for a couple of years. And they parked on them against that brick wall going down there. They were lined up, people. And actually, and boat ramps were town folk, it's not public. And we need to keep like a, well, I think it's a little...
As always, thanks. The Saturday.
Thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but I thought I'd go with it. I don't think that the town council is in control of this, but I just have to say that I read recently that for the Urbana Oyster Festival this year, that Sweet Justice was not invited to participate. And I, for one, and hundreds and hundreds of people, think that that's going to cost the town money because they bring in, just that one band brings in hundreds and hundreds of people from out of town because of the legacy that they created here. I don't know what we can do about it, but I would plan to write to whatever committee it is. And I would encourage other townspeople to do the same because to me, this is an injustice to our town. Sweet Justice should be here. They're part of this town and they contribute to this town and this is, this is something that shouldn't have happened.
Right.
It's the Urbana Oyster Festival.
It's an oyster festival function and I guess I'm kind of pleased to say it has literally nothing to do with council, other than...
And I think so, but I just had to get it off my chest and we'll do whatever we can to change that. Thank you.
Just be nice with Joe Hammond's telephone. That's before it's on when you're making phone calls because there's only one person that mans that phone.
Okay, definitely. We'll do, we'll do.
All right. Unfinished business.
Good evening again. The first item on unfinished business is the Holinsky property special use permit request. Council have a public hearing on the matter, May twenty-two. Case-related materials were conveyed in that meeting packet. Following the hearing, staff was asked to get more information concerning the prior case from 2024 decided by the present applicant. The application was conveyed under separate cover. Please note the following. And that application was for the 2024 SUP-03 Harrelson. Harrelson converted an existing structure that did not need setback. The proposal in subject case is to build new and meet setbacks. Harrelson's construction has been confirmed to not have a kitchen, thus that it's not a complete room. But a guest house with living area doubling as sleeping area and bath facility. It was advertised as conversion of a garage to an additional dwelling unit. Essentially, we over, we over-advertised the actual use. The proposal with the Holinsky case does not include an interior layout as only considers use and placement, not internal arrangement. But the agent has indicated all four dwelling unit elements will be in place. Council has also received a copy of the petition presented during the hearing. Other communications have been provided either at your place tonight because they just came in or you've received them through emails from me as I received them, but they've all been forwarded to you. As well, staff was asked and answered several general questions about provisions concerning additional dwelling use, units, accessory buildings, construction, construction timing, and what was conveyed to the, and all that was conveyed to council under separate covers. Fiscal impact is unknown, but some, there will be some with any improvement to the property via real estate taxes and utility service charges. Staff recommendation as previously provided is to approve with conditions. The council is requested to take action, but you have up to one year from the date of the application to act. Then you have a sample motion to adopt, adopt with conditions noted, or you can add or subtract conditions, deny or defer. If you defer, please specify the date that you want to defer to. Your next meeting is June twenty-sixth, the next meeting after that is July tenth. You have to take any questions you have.
I am, the application changed a number of times. And I am not clear on what the final, what final application term we're talking about.
Okay.
Can I also just say, if we're going to defer to another date?
Yeah.
If you're going to just do it later in the meeting or something, then that...
Okay.
Actually, I might put a book there. So, look, before.
Recommend you to answer any questions?
I'm just, I'm just pointing it out that if, I just, that if they defer, they defer to another date other than today.
Right. Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
I may be the only one who is confused with this.
You're done?
No.
We wonder why it has to begin with.
Should I, may I make a motion to these?
Yes, well.
Do we have a date that we want to defer to?
I think deferring it to June twenty-sixth makes sense.
Sounds like we could defer up to one year, so, and it will need to be re-advertized for public hearing. Okay.
If we defer, if you defer?
Oh, boy.
It's a new rule. Well, it's a two-year-old rule.
Okay, okay, well then.
Well, then we can't, we can't defer to June twenty-sixth because we don't have time to advertise that.
That's just a couple of weeks. We either defer it longer or we make a decision. I mean, just two weeks, it's not going to make a difference at this point.
I don't know, I don't know.
We have all the information.
I know there's some people that still have questions.
Yeah, I went through so many rounds of that. And I don't know that I have the final information, so I'm sorry, but...
No, I understand.
Yeah, I want to make sure that I know.
So, so maybe the motion should be to defer to the July...
First meeting in July.
First meeting in July, and that gives us time to...
Can you do the second meeting in July? Because unfortunately I will not be at the July tenth meeting and I do want to participate in this.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So shall I make a motion then?
Do that.
Okay, I move to defer council's decision on the Holinsky matter for the special use application 2025-2026-01 until July twenty-four at our July working session.
The second thing you mentioned.
Yeah. Go ahead, second, okay. Any discussion?
Oh, the conditions. I guess it clears everybody else, but they're not clear tonight. That may be my fault, probably is my fault, but I think everybody needs to know what the conditions are going into that meeting.
So you want me to write an interpretation on each of the conditions?
You might just give them to me and let me read them.
Well, there's no, the staff report that was conveyed previously.
Yeah.
And then the planning condition added one, and that was conveyed.
But, but that may change the whole attitude, what we're going to do with the conditions.
Okay. We should be able to get that sorted out by the July twenty-four meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we've had a...
We need to make a point.
We had a motion, second discussion, any other discussion? Can this be a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Moving to resolution oh-two-five, oh, two oh-two-five zero-zero-eight for budget approval and appropriations.
Right, in your packet you will find the entire Hannibal Band of Assistant Year 2025-2026 Budget as recommended by the Finance Committee for Public Hearing on May twenty-second to twenty-twenty-five. The general fund revenues and expenses balance at $729,544, but condensed tax increase figuring includes self-funding community activity revenues and expenditures, which balance at $7,200. It also includes across-the-board three percent cost of living adjustment. The request for Main Street, which I think you all have already done some discussions on, was referred to the Finance Committee. They met and recommended $1,000 from the promotional request, which is an existing line item in the budget, which is already included at $1,500, being directed to the Main Street effort. That would leave $500 available for any other requests council might receive and choose to support. The water fund revenues and expenses balances at $380,000 with in-town by monthly water rate, minimum usage of $6,000 and $54.71 over 6,000 gallons, $5.08 per thousand gallons and out-of-town by monthly wet water rate of minimum usage of $6,000 at $87.23 over 6,000 gallons, $8.40 per thousand gallon. These figures reflect an increase. The Tabor Fund revenues and expenses balance at $30,000. This does not reflect the current fund balance, which varies with the financial market. Up in Point Marina revenues and expenditures balance at $78,650. Staff recommendation is to adopt the budget as presented this evening, which reflects the proposals submitted to the public hearing as well as appropriation authorization being carried out. So that is the requested action by council. Now, as you've already discussed, another option has been suggested to list in the budget a separate line item for Urbana Main Street. That is depicted on the next page in your packet. Thus, an amendment to the proposed budget is necessary. Now, that next page shows you the breakdown of the promotional request to $500 in the Urbana Main Street as a new line item, 181, 155, 50, at $1,000. So your sample motion then would be, if that's what you want to do, would be you move to amend this budget by moving $1,000 from that line item promotional request to the new fund line item, Urbana Main Street. After you've decided that issue, then you can take up adoption of the motion, adoption of the budget in appropriation. You have, if you have to take any questions you have.
And I, I think based on the requirements, put my two cents out there because I got the mic, that we do the combination because then that meets some of the, the fact that it's actually designated in the budget will satisfy some of the requirements for the Main Street folks because it will be actually identified in the budget.
Agree.
All right, so does someone want to make the...
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move to amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget by moving $1,000 from line item 100-8100-5510, promotional request, to a new general fund line item 100-81100-5550, Urbana Main Street.
Okay. Motion and second, any further to second? Is this a voice vote or?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And you're not about to voice that?
Yeah, oh, oh, sorry, okay. Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Larry Tuning?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes. Barry Hanson?
Yeah.
That's justice. All right. Now, moving on to the next sample motion, does somebody want to?
I'll do that one. I move to approve resolution two-zero-two-five-zero-zero-eight as amended, approving and appropriating the town of Urbana Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Do I have a second on that? Any discussion? All right, we'll start at the other end. Beth Jackson? Very handsome.
Yeah.
I say yes. Alana Courtney? Larry Tuning?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
All right. Team Glendy, Virginia Street Terminus.
We're going to...
Down in Georgia.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Yeah, can we turn it cooler here?
Yeah, can we fix the...
I know, Ted, do you know how to... Sure.
A lot of bodies.
I'm having a power surge.
I'm not feeling my horn.
A power surge, really.
On the side, I've left.
I, I knocked it down about four degrees.
Okay, thanks.
On the sidewalk.
Thank you.
All right.
They're nice, I got one at the hospital.
Pain, pain's landing tissue, um, and I'm, I'm going to just, please go over some stuff. Uh, Mr. Don Georgeette is here, he's going to speak to, uh, some very specific particulars. Um, we, I've included just about all the material on this for the last year. And, uh, uh, most recently, the Middle Peninsula Plant District Commission, uh, has been engaged looking for some grant funding. Um, a purchase offer has been made and no action taken. Uh, but Councilmember Courtney secured another option, which Mr. Georgeette will speak to. That was directed to the PDC for thoughts, and the response from Mr. Ovid lays out some concerns with, um, their funding, their funding stream is in question, it hasn't, it hasn't opened up yet. Um, and, uh, if the planning is to recur, uh, it's, uh, now is the time to go forward, but the flex map option that he spoke of would not be conducive to, to the planning. Um, I've not heard, uh, from Doc Sabey. We do have their estimates in the past, but you're looking at something between, um, you know, zero free to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, I don't know if Mr. Ovid wants to make any comments now, or perhaps wait till he'll hear from Mr. Georgeette. The staff recommendation is with options and caveats from the PDC, in the opinion of Northern Neck Native Plant Company, planning season window closing, but I've been corrected about that, um, the planning season is really all summer. Uh, council may be pruned to accept the Northern Neck plant, um, uh, offer with those, uh, with those considerations, provided. Now, those considerations will be allow for plant sales, to finance an informational placard to be posted on the site, subject to council's review. No requirement for the town to actively engage in as a member of any group, and before planning, uh, submit a design sketch to the town administrator that allows for pedestrian access and the emergency vehicle access to the condominium property. The sample motion pretty much restates the staff recommendation. Now, a lot has happened since yesterday. Um, and council aware, uh, on a trip down to Marina, I discovered that this area was being used as contractor laydown area. And after making a couple of phone calls and talking to some folks, it, in particular, people on site, um, they pulled everything out and they regraded, uh, the property. Unfortunately, what that does is, all that compacted gravel, where people have parked their vehicle, has now been churned off. Okay, so it's loose set. I've reached out to Doc Sabey and asked him to do a corrective action to, um, silt fence or hay bale, the low end of that, and I have not had any engagement from them whatsoever. Okay, uh, and that's kinda where we are now. Uh, Mr. Georgeette and I got together this afternoon, looked over the property, looked at, you know, to discuss with you. The other issue here is the condominium needs, at the contractor, Doc Sabey, needs access down that, um, down the property and over to the right. They can't get it from the other side, it's shoe-built out. Um, they gotta be able to access. So essentially, what they wanted to do, and what they could do, was to use that emergency easement, but not for contractor laydown. Uh, where Mr. Georgeette has indicated he'll do the initial planning is closer to the water than the emergency access. So they can, council is agreeable, they can use it and not disturb the planning project.
We let them use that before, they tore it all the heck, and then they never fixed it.
I'm just giving options.
Yeah, well, my option is no.
And I had, I, I, I have, I had a kind of nice conversation with one of the condominium owners and said, this isn't part of situation of, um, fool me once, shame on you, and then life, shame on me.
Yeah, no.
They've inherited a bad situation.
Ted, what, what are their?
They can work through the water.
So they assumed that they were gonna be able to use that engine, use it.
Yes.
Um, what, clearly, they, they thought some other alternatives, for instance, couldn't they, it would be more expensive for them, but couldn't they, uh, negotiate most of that? Uh, the, um, the boat ramp and put it on a barge and take it over and do it?
They need boats.
I don't know.
Do they?
Yeah, I don't know. Um, but that's where they, where they've removed everything that they were staging.
Yeah.
And put that on the condo property.
Oh.
But that has to be moved to where they're actually doing the work. And that's all on the bucket. Um, I'll, I'll be happy to take any other questions, but I think really, Mr. Georgeette is the person we need to hear from.
Um, and I'd like to make a comment, Susan Architatus over here sitting in the audience. My conversation with Susan, Susan was the one that knows Mr. Georgeette, and she is the one who suggested we get in touch with him, so she is the reason.
Right, thank you.
Meet her outside afterwards.
Excuse me.
Still my friend.
Bill, I, I have, I have, I have asked, um, I had talked to Ted a little while back about having that piece of property surveyed. And surveyed because that fence was moved and we don't truly know. So it's not that much to have that piece of property surveyed, so I think it would be in all of our best interests, um, to have that surveyed and make sure what, what is what and where, what we have.
And that would come up under new business?
We can take it up on this.
Okay.
Man, if the council wants it surveyed, I gotta hear from the council to send them up.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to have the town have that piece of property at the Virginia Street Terminus surveyed.
Okay.
Let's just have my property surveyed, okay, my.
No.
Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Really?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, yeah, uh, my name is Don Georgeette, I'm the owner of Northern Neck Native Plant Company. Um, just to point a correction when, uh, the kind of folks here from the Urbana-Main Street, they've said the Northern Neck Native Plant Society. I'm not affiliated with them, they are a nonprofit organization, uh, based, no, it, it happens all the time. Um, uh, and I actually carry more business cards, so I'll point it out. Um, I have been doing, um, native plant installations in and around the Northern Neck for the last, like, year and change or so, maybe more. I've recently gone full-time since, uh, January first. And actually, starting yesterday, I had hired my first employee who comes from a marine construction outfit that was doing riprap installation, five thousand plug, beach nourishment, so she has a lot of the, um, you know, larger permitting and like big sort of project emphasis. The niche that I've laid out for my business is to focus on plants that are native to the place that they're planting. Uh, and we have access through something called the Virginia Digital Flora, uh, Digital Atlas Flora. It's run, I believe, by a nonprofit associated with Virginia Tech. We can actually drill down to county level native plants. Uh, there are some gaps in the information, but, um, the nice thing is that the plants that are native to, uh, Middlesex County understanding shores here are largely the same plants that are native to Lancaster and to Northumberland, uh, with some caveat. So the planting that we're talking about doing here is nothing exotic, it's nothing out of the ordinary, in fact, relatively mundane. Um, most of these plantings, I think, follow, um, somewhat of a, a standard placing. There's Spartina alterniflora, which is your typical tidal grass, that goes in your area between low tide and high tide, mean low tide and mean high tide. Uh, once you get above that area, there's a plant called Spartina patens, uh, these are Latin names for it. Um, that's a plant that can actually go further back into the dry sand area. Uh, but typically, it's used in that sort of average high tide and a few feet back. Once you're in the sandy section, um, it's common to hear folks say, nothing grows here. Things do grow there, we just generally kill them before they get there. Um, and folks are used to, you know, they want the white sand beach treatment. Um, what does belong there is plants like panicum burgatum, which is switchgrass, uh, panicum amararum, which is bitter panic grass, um, and then also American beach grass, which is a Latin name I can't pronounce, I'm not gonna butcher that, but it's called American beach grass. Um, these three grasses grow in sand, it's what would have been here when John Smith or the Monaghews or any other family that's been here since sixteen hundreds would have been here. Uh, the reason these grasses are so important is because they draw roots down really deep, and so the stalks themselves will capture water as it comes down in a flood drain event. They also can provide, uh, providing erosion barrier as wind blows. It's not perfect, you know, land moves, it's moved since time immemorial. Uh, but it is something that is done, and what you see, uh, being required more often through programs like Living Shoreline. My niche has been to avoid projects that require permitting, I'm not trying, I, again, these sort of these small projects, residential shorelines, not moving large sons of earth. Take all that and bracket it. The other side of this that's important to me is that, um, I'm probably one of the few people in the plant industry that comes from a business background, and that's specifically tax. Um, and I got my MBA before that, and I'm very passionate about rural financial sustainability. Um, it's a challenging issue on the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula. Situations that come up like this are very common, uh, and it's very easy to look at an opportunity to say, we could receive five thousand, fifty thousand, however much, for a private party to purchase a piece of land, uh, that would fulfill the town coffers, uh, but you, we lose public access. I'm originally from the Midwest, where public access to Great Lakes is not common. Public access to the Chesapeake Bay and its tributaries is not so common after. Uh, so when Susan reached out to me about this, this project, pretty much before the details were done, I said, I'll be free because I believe in public access and public ownership of, of land. Uh, of enjoyable public space, which I mean, it's a collective isolation of town.
Well, we could.
Easy, um, recorded, so. But the other side of this is that, um, this isn't just about cost mitigation, it's not just about a native, an effective natural solution. It's also jumping off point for revenue generation. Native plants are increasing of interest, um, my business runs plant sales usually on, uh, Saturday or a Saturday and Sunday through the month. I have folks drive down from Stafford to Kilmarnock, I've had folks come from Richmond to Hague, where my home site is. Uh, people come from all around, so there's an opportunity here, one, to run a general native plant sale with fifteen percent of gross sales donated to whatever non, uh, nonprofit organization would wanna, you know, partner with this, which Urbana-Main Street has been, um, kind of ideal. Uh, the other side of this is that, this is how all of my plant sales have grown. I think I've, out of the, maybe like twelve or thirteen plant sales I've done, I think only one or two have been unrelated to a nonprofit. Traditionally, what I've done is partner with the Boys and Girls Club in Kilmarnock. Uh, I set up a plant sale for a couple of hours, I cut them a check for fifteen percent off the top of gross sales, and that's that. We did that, uh, for a handful of Saturdays in the spring.
Right.
Um, so the timing is perfect, I think the timing is right, I have the interest in native plants, uh, we see more and more homeowners opting for a little shoreline. I have more and more homeowners asking me, what do I do about this area of my lawn above the riprap? Because we have crazy storms. Because of erosion into the river and tributaries, we have rising levels that have to be dredged. So, once again, we're back to the same problem of, if we can plant it, or we can keep it in place, we have a better shot at keeping it. I'm not here to wade into the town controversies about where the kayak lawn should be, how far it goes, who didn't pay who before. Don't care, couldn't care about it. Um, unless it's gonna help them this long, then I care about whatever they're saying. But what I laid out to, uh, my new friends here, Ted and, and Bill, um, was that the way that I would recommend this plant and go, you guys can imagine, it's a rectangle, there's a telephone pole that kind of starts the, uh, the emergency access line into the, uh, to the condo association. There's a small swale in between where water can currently run up. My thought is to leave the area to the right of the swale as unplanted until Doc Sabey can finish their work. This is because the work they do is important, if that seawall fails, it's gonna be a lot of problems. Um, and also, I don't want folks to have to worry about where they're stepping, like their work is important and it's time, that it will be done. Focusing on the left side of it, we can focus on doing tidal planting, doing sand planting. Along the fence line, there's about a four-foot area where currently grass is growing. There's also goldenrod growing naturally there, so we already have native pollinators there. My present, my pitch is to use native grasses that you would see in the dunes that would go in the sand to hold it. And along the side, um, basically starting from the road all the way down, is you would start to see more colorful pollinators. At the entrance point of the, of this easement is where you would see a placard that would say, this is a pollinator habitat. There is numerous marketing, sort of, not gimmicks, but tools and framings of, this is a pollinator habitat, this is a monarch stopover, this is a, you name it. The thinking I have is that, doing something like this, and then partnering with, uh, Main Street Urbana, to do a native plant sale or a native plant festival in the fall, is one, an opportunity to draw more folks to the town. Um, there's also a chance for how that impacts meals tax and other revenue. And then from that, use funding that can go towards beautification of Main Street and business, that's more clearly, you know, apt to it, right? So avoiding the, the, the real question of, should these funds come from meals tax versus, uh, general business? One of the ideas I thought of as I was driving, driving by recently was that we have small planters and areas in front of businesses that right now have plants like Nandina, which is an invasive plant, where they have, most of your common landscape plants are, you know, Asiatic and, and bad, basically.
Yeah.
Um, or useless, at least. So we have an opportunity to replace those with funds raised from a native plant sale. Um, so we kind of have this, like, self-perpetuating piece of being interesting and potentially first community to do something like that. Uh, and let's be very honest, my interest in this, yeah, there is a piece of like, this is a professional interest, but it also is good for business, the more people that are purchasing native plants in some way, shape, or form will likely trickle down to me as I work on building the higher off wholesale side of things. So, that's where this came from. The idea is the first stage will be basically left side of the swale, focusing on the sand. If there are survey questions and boundaries, we can stay in bounds of that by going just a little bit further right inside the fence. That way, if it's moved a couple inches either way, it's no big deal. Because there are native pollinators already, uh, in consult with my, my new employee Ty, um, you know, her idea was that we basically dot that area with other pollinators, so we're not really ripping it out, other than maybe to cut back some of the existing turf there. But because we're worried about land turnover, we're really just trying to get plants in there.
Right.
The only plants I do not have on hand immediately are the tidal grasses, I'll need about three or four days to get those. But I would be able to start planting the dune and sand grasses as early as tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
Um, I said it also because.
Get to it.
I came from working today, so it's very hot, so the sooner the better. Um, the only grasses that I would say are really time-limited are the tidal grasses, we want those in by end of July, mid-August, because those need more time to establish. Um, sand grass is generally in summer, and we could push further, but because you have an open and bare shore, it's storm season, it's heavily moving, it puts in. Uh, I'm happy to warranty those plants and just keep an eye on them, replacing them if they die or they blow away. Uh, but I will be leaning and working with Urbana-Main Street just in terms of keeping an eye on it. Ted did bring up a good, uh, point about markings, uh, because right now, folks are using it as a launching pad to the creek. Uh, so there will need to be some discussion of just whether it's caution tape or some kind of demarcation, even if it's just a steak from Home Depot with ties, you know, I'm happy to do that as well, just to let folks know to, to leave it alone.
To not walk there.
Uh, for a while, until we're able to set up benches and placards and things, because again, if we're only planting to the telephone pole running across, that back area can then be laid with mulch, gravel, you name it, um, then you can have it as a community meeting space, you can have it as easement access, whatever you can say, so.
So is anything that you're gonna do to stop the erosion at the, where it meets the creek?
So the tidal grasses are sort of the frontline, those go.
They're gonna go, okay.
In the water, and then from there, we'll have the Spartina patens, which is the next line in the sand. And the idea is that it's basically, I go, the sandy portion runs all the way to the telephone pole and even further back.
Okay.
Uh, because of what the actions of the contractor lay down and, uh, to call it a regrade is generous, it was smoothed out a little bit. But what it did do is that there's no longer a, a straight slope, there is a little bit of a leveling off.
Right.
So there is a way to actually maybe potentially terrace that, so there is less.
Okay.
And again, I'm not a civil engineer, my.
Are you gonna bring any sand in to make like a dune anywhere? Are you gonna build it up?
No.
Okay.
Um, and not because that's a bad idea, it's just outside my skill set.
Okay.
Um, when I went through with Ty today, we took out, um, a planting tool and kind of checked the different soils, it's all what you would expect, the water is wet on soil that you turn over and it smells terrible, the sand, turn it over and it's sandy, the dirt's got some dirt in it, it's really, um.
So if folks are walking, you know, down that way, what is, how does it impact the view of the creek? Is it, because Doc Sabey won't put the tree in, Ted, and that would have eliminated the view.
Correct, so the idea here is that all of the grasses that we're talking about planting, when they're in a lower nutrient environment like sand, we're talking about maybe two to three feet. Grant, plants like switchgrass and bitter panic grass can grow three to six feet, but the variation there is usually on soil nutrition. They can also be clipped, can be mowed, but you could clip them down. And the idea here is that this is very much the blowing in the wind sort of sand, so you'd still be able to see it. Um, I do think that's the other benefit of doing this as a phased approach, leaving one side open is to make sure, you know, actually, maybe we do want like a little walkway for water to come up, or not, you're not here to wave at that. Um, but the idea is to keep that visibility. Um, at a minimum, that you would look like a marsh planted shoreline anywhere else you might see in a naturalized area.
Okay, I did just wanna add that Main Street does have to apply for a grant for wayfinding signs. So this is a place we would put a sign if we do get that grant, which we'll find out soon.
Correct, what kind of sign, I'm sorry?
We have a a grant application out for wayfinding sign, and this is one of the locations we would put one of the signs.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think this is a, this is awesome.
Mr. Sherry, I can't tell if you're thinking or skeptical.
It may not be much, but I'm all I think. I'd like to, if I could, see if Mr. um Taylor Ovid, if you had any comments on what you've heard from the Middle Peninsula Plant District Commission.
Um, so I'll fill you in on where I'm at, it muddies the water even more, um, which is unfortunate, but uh I kind of sit and spit, spit the truth is usually what I my approach. Um, so we have a uh a grant agreement that has made it way to us, it has not been fully executed um from the Department of Environmental Quality that would likely be able to assist with installing a traditional living shoreline, a fleximat living shoreline, or a matrix sealed living shoreline. So those types of shoreline technologies, is it Mr. Gardner? Am I getting that his name right, would probably be familiar with. Um, so my thoughts being, if you you could potentially move forward, and I'm not sure how that would play play out in a regulatory process as far as permitting, because my my project would have to be permitted. Um, you could allow the grass installation and just install a sill of matrix or a traditional living shoreline with rock. Um, with it already being grass behind it, typically you can do a sill, get a permit for a group two permit um to do the sill if it has marsh already behind it. With it being newly installed like that, that is uh something I have not uh, I've not crossed that bridge yet. Um, I'm not sure how that that would work, or if it would. And ultimately, I kind of just like to add, it's it's kind of the town's decision on which way they they want to go and which which method they want to go down. Um, and if, I think, I don't think I need to explain the different, the three different options that my grant is able to offer. Um, if anybody needs a refresher, anybody has any questions um with what I've I've kind of given them. Um, again, we have a grant agreement, it has not been, basically, we got that this morning. Um, we typically review it to make sure the grant agreement is kosher and has everything we want. And and you know, that was proposed is in it and accurately reflected, once it is, it's executed, but it hasn't been fully executed yet.
Mr. Ovid, this is Mary Hanson, and um I think that the approach that the three options you've given us have provide some kind of um barrier, whether it's rock or whether it's something else um at the shoreline itself. What I want to do is, my understanding is that if we take the approach that uh that Mr. Georgette is proposing, that that would not, that would become unnecessary. Okay, I'm getting nodding here that yes, that would be a nece, which is my understanding of how a living shoreline. Yeah, okay, um, do you want to comment any further on that, Mr. Ovid?
Um, I wouldn't say it's unnecessary, I think that the reason the three different things we install are allowed to be installed is because they've been identified by the Department of Environmental Quality and uh as a best management practice that are able to be entered into the econo- uh the economic, the Environmental Protection Agency um into what's called a warehouse. Um, so we enter those in and basically that shows, that helps the bay meets its uh reducing, reducing sediment load into the bay. Um, so that you're, that's how living shorelines work, typically, they're gonna have a sill in front of them, they're either gonna be planted there in the raw sands, like they potentially could be there. Um, or uh sand fill is added um and graded appropriately, and then back, that backfill is implanted typically with native marsh grasses. Um, just like he's proposing planting, um typically planted one inch on center. Um, and then they kind of flourish and take over, and it's really cool to see them, they do really well, especially if there's not a lot of shade. Uh, the the thing I would add is, if he plants now, um fleximat would be completely ruled out because there'd be no way to install the fleximat with the grass already down. Whereas potentially, you could still, you could still, essentially what I'm saying is you could move forward with him, and then I could potentially come in and do a sill, but I'm not sure that I can because I'm not sure how the regulatory process would view that behind, that area behind it, is is it a marsh or is it not? I I don't know how they'll they'll react to that, I've never posed that question, I've never seen that happen. I've done it where there's an established marsh uh where we just put in a sill, if there's more than eight foot of marsh behind it, then you can just put in the sill under a group two permit.
How long would it take you to find that out?
Oh, I don't know that we get an answer on that very quickly, I would say I might be able to dive a little deeper into it with some staff we have at the commission, so our our acting director is formerly the uh Deputy Commissioner uh in charge of coastal policy um with the commission, so typically those questions used to get posed to her. Um, so she'd probably be a good one to ask, but as far as how the commission would vote on it, it'd be kind of like asking Ted how you all would vote on something, he doesn't, he doesn't control that or know that.
Like so.
Thank you.
I should have any.
Uh, John, I uh, so let me see if I can uh round this a little bit. One of the catchphrases I developed in at the Virginia Department of Emergency Maintenance was, we are consistent with our inconsistencies. I don't want us to be inconsistent, okay? I know at one time, working with um docks of the bay, you all wanted a more detailed sketch, a more. So, that's one of the things that I'm recommending that you get is a sketch. And I think if we're gonna go um and get an updated survey, and I would intend to go back to um Bay Design, because they did the last one, and not have to pay for startup costs.
Right.
Uh, have them do the survey plan, and then Mr. Georgette can use that to do his layout, you know, his layout plan. Um, again, when this started, I was in, I was given the impression we had to have it done by June thirty. If we have a summer planting season and we're not held to a June thirty part deadline, we can probably knock most of this out and proceed.
What say you?
Oh, it's just hotter in July, that's why.
Well, also, how long is it gonna take?
Start earlier in the morning.
How long is, excuse me, Ted? How long is it gonna take docks of the bay, if they're gonna have their stuff once again on the property, how long is it gonna?
Their stuff is not on the property now, their stuff is not on the.
So they're not gonna use it? They'll use it.
They won't.
But that's what I'm saying, if they're gonna.
Their project is five weeks. But what Mr. uh Georgette has outlined is he can work around.
Around that, I understand that, but I'm just wondering how long, I'm asking you how long they were gonna have their stuff on the property, so.
They won't have their stuff on the property, but what they're asking for is access.
Access.
And that's uh five weeks.
And you're okay with the access?
I am.
And it's the emergency access they're gonna use, right?
That, well, no, it's not, it's it's not really, the the easement that they have is specified in indeed for emergency access. They're basically asking for something beyond that.
Right.
That's y'all's call to decide whether or not you want to um, you know, allow the condo project to go forward, and it needs to go forward, and have their contractor, put docks of the bay out, it's their contractor.
Right.
To get to the property, they've got to go.
As long as it doesn't inhibit um this project from taking place.
Yeah, that's one of the things that Ted and I uh kind of surveyed, and I've walked the property, I've hunted it four or five times, I've measured it out, that there's more than enough space for them, even on your land, plus the easement land, plus the existing kind of gravel I have that leads to it, there's more than enough space that they would not even need to be near it, especially if we're staying, you know, to the more or left of the the swale that.
Right.
This is just one council member myself, but they need to have access.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they.
We agree.
We do. And they're just talking about in and out, they're not talking about blocking it.
Right, right. But we need to make sure that they're nailed down with some sort of agreement that they will make right, because.
Any damage.
Yeah.
Well, I I'm wondering if this might provide an opportunity for us to get them in exchange to do something about the soils piled that they left in the water that wasn't there before.
Ted, there are a lot of issues, have you been down there and looked at this? That, you see that big pile?
Yeah.
That's that's right against there, the condo stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, that's critical to the highway department, that's PDA. That's not us, there's there's all kinds of things that's going on here.
Yeah.
That, that I I don't think can be remedied. It'll take some research.
I guess, I think it would be, I think it's worth our thinking about, is there some way that we can that the town can benefit from our generosity when we've kind of been taken advantage of before by them?
Yep.
But not by condos, well.
Not by the condos, no, not by the condos, by docks on the bay.
Right, it it's it's my impression that when Ted approached them about the stuff that they put in there, saying that this time we wanted something to be fixed, they moved the stuff.
Mm-hmm, so they're not gonna do anything, they're not gonna do anything. We want to address Mr. Georgia. I, yeah, I would, I I'd like to make a motion, if it's okay to um.
Before you, before you, I can make one, just for uh Mr. Ovid on the call. Uh, given that there are options related to living shorelines, what's challenging is that living shorelines are opted in the water. We have an opportunity just to keep your options open, that we can focus on the dry sand, dune portion of the planting, leave the the sort of wetland tidal portion open, as you kind of discussed this, that if you wanted to install the oyster shells and everything, but if not, I just wanted to give you that option.
Okay.
Not to make any.
Right, I'm gonna move to accept the no cost offer of Northern Neck Plant Company to initially plant and restore the land owned by the town and known as Virginia Street Terminus or Payne's Landing off Oyster Road situated between Oyster Harbor condominium and the Montague Marina, with plans identified in their proposal with the following conditions attached. Um, before planning, submit a design sketch to the town administrator that allows for pedestrian access and emergency access to the condominium property. Um, allow for plant sales to finance informational placard to be posted on the site, subject to council's review, and no requirement for the town to actively engage in as a member of any group.
Do we need to have a survey?
Um.
Well, I've, I've um.
Well, this, I think it's for the work.
When you can do the uh submit a design sketch uh.
Yeah.
Based on um a new, an updated survey or a new survey.
Okay, so do I need to to um amend, I guess, some of the motions that I made?
I think it's just state.
I think it's just state that last minute.
Yeah.
And what's the latest?
Um, twenty twelve is what I have.
What's wrong with the third?
Well, that's, I I think what we can afford is the field, the field market.
Yeah, we need to have the quarter state.
Yeah. Um.
Saying this before except after, before planning, submit a.
Okay, before planning, submit a design sketch um to the town administrator that allows pedestrian access and emergency vehicles to access the condominium property. Um, based on the new.
Based on.
Um, survey.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
You have a good evening.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
All him.
No, you helped us out.
He's doing my backyard, and y'all are, y'all are getting a great value.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to um Main Street for um.
Yeah.
Doing that, I will also assist in any way and maintain that, if you guys need my help. Yeah.
All right, next item, new business, use of taper fund for playground equipment repair.
Thank you, Mr. Georgia.
I guess I don't care about.
Mind you guys aren't gonna swing or slide, you don't wanna know what needs to be fixed on the playground, you're gonna leave us?
Okay.
No.
Uh, we've had some playground treatment that has, you know, used to wear, exposure to the weather. Uh, it's it's um not as safe as it could be, uh we want to undertake some repairs. Uh, the company that was approached, I believe this is the company that actually did the original installation, Playground Specialist Incorporated, gave us a range of options. Uh, the highest of the range was forty-six thousand nine hundred.
Oh, I know words.
To um do a complete replacement on the apparatus. Uh, there was a subsequent, a little bit less, thirty-seven, I think it was in the neighborhood of about thirty-seven thousand. Well, what we're looking at, uh, and recommending to you is a repair of the equipment at eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, we can go with repair.
Okay.
Unless we're gonna build another park.
We'll remedy the the current job.
Yeah, yeah, they buy their, they don't identify.
Yeah, maybe we should find a different company, because this is the company that we bought the stuff from, and it's already falling apart.
Well, how long has it been there?
I was gonna say.
Five years.
I think probably eight years.
Yeah. Yeah, I was putting it with Diana.
Six, eight years.
An exposure to the uh elements and everything. Um.
Oh, okay.
It's so really used.
Phew.
And um I understand that the uh.
Right.
The taper fund was what was used to actually purchase the equipment.
Yep.
Benny?
Yep.
Um, so you have a sample motion to uh undertake the repair at eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Well, I'm going to authorize the mayor of Savannah to direct eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars to be taken from the taper fund and to repair it. Excuse me, three grand, and it's parked, employing playground specialist, I think, um Vermont.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And the good news is that currently the money is there without going below a million bucks.
That's right.
Um, it's time to do it for me.
Well, do we, um, so speaking of disappearing and and money there, what about for our sliding board for the pool? Because the pad, the pad was already put there when the pool was built, to have that sliding board um put in. You don't have that money.
Sand and water.
And.
Um, yeah.
And we have talked about that before, the last time we talked, it was not at a million bucks yet, so. Um.
I don't think we talked about the finance.
No, we haven't talked about that that and finance, but.
Well, can that be brought up in finance committee, because the water's there, the pad's there, everything's there for to be put in.
What's the cost of this thing?
It it varies, it was like.
Yeah, it was between, I think, twenty and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
A sliding board.
Yeah. Yeah. Come on along and now, you know.
Well, let's get through this one.
Yeah, let's do it.
And then.
Well, can you put that though at least to discuss in the finance committee, please?
Yes. All right, any further discussion?
I will.
No, that's not part of the discussion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, all right? Public comment two. This ends up a go.
All my questions, all my comments have finished.
That's amazing.
Write that down.
Birthday.
It's, yeah. Yeah, happy birthday, Miss Antino.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, happy birthday. All right, so, um, next item, it's a closed meeting, right?
No, council, no, it's a request. No, council, no, it's a request.
Oh, you're right.
Sure. Are we actually going as closely?
Second Saturday?
No, other than just, you know, watch for the rain and hopefully we don't have to counsel, but if we do, guys will move to October.
Okay. Now it's time to go in person? Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for coming to our meeting, be sure to come to the others too. Don't stay away, please. We gotta know how you feel before we can vote on something.
That's right.
We don't want you to be mad if we vote the wrong way.
And I'll just tell you, we came from Petersburg.
Wonderful.
So, this is, this is nothing.
Yeah, I, I see, I see some of Petersburg. Yeah, so, yeah, definitely. Right, thank you, have a great night.
Are you ready, Mr. Harrow? Is there a motion to go into closed meetings pursuant to Virginia Coast Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A eight for consultation with the town attorney regarding a specific legal matter, S Q P G S O one, one eighty-one, that's happening.
You have a motion?
We have.
I haven't been right there with it.
The meeting's still open.
Yeah, we're just making the motion. I, 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 we need a second.
Second.
All right.
And then a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I'm going to close meeting.
Okay, okay.
It's an open meeting.
And to certify that only.
To certify that only things that we went into closed session for were discussed.
Heard or considered. Thank you.
I say. I was gonna say, thank you.
Okay, now we have to go and voice count.
Oh wait, we need a second.
We need a second.
All right, that's justice. Mary?
I said certify.
Alana?
I certify.
Larry?
I certify.
I said certify, I said certify.
I'll certify as well.
This is a jelly.
And motion to adjourn?
Second.